That I call this meeting of South River Mayor and Borough Council meeting number seven of April eleventh, twenty twenty two to order. Statement of notice of publication. Thank you. Local? Here. 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 Thank you. Please stand for the decision. Please sit. We have one proclamation today. That is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April tenth to the sixteenth. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt responsible police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians are critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the South River Police Department's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact that citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas public safety telecommunicators of the South River Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore I, Mayor John M. Crenzel, along with the members of the council of the Borough of South River, hereby proclaim April tenth through sixteenth, twenty twenty two, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in South River in honor of the men and women diligence and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. Given under my hand and seal of the Borough of South River, New Jersey, this eleventh day of April twenty twenty two. So. Thank all of them for their very hard work that they do. And it is not easy. I've been there when there has been a crisis going on. And it is not easy when people call up during a power crisis and there's a blackout going on and people are demanding why weren't they told that this was going to happen? So it's it is not an easy job, not really, so we thank them. We have the agenda session. We have two items uh that I asked to be put on. Uh one for me, one from the council and the mayor. Uh this is our business session. We're going to discuss matters that will be uh talked about and decided later. The first is this municipal lien redemption that we're going to be voting on today. I just want to make sure if I understand this and I'll talk to our attorney that uh we could just briefly give it rundown. Okay, now I believe Mr. Gindy, uh you were the one that was talking about this.
Yes, I'm actually happy to see that they're taking a building that's been abandoned or turning some of it and finally putting it back in tax world. This is something that the town has been in dire needs. You know, business come back. So this is basically our way of saying we're better than for all. Hopefully go through today. This is something stronger than.
So that these two items are in tax world, but have not, no one's been paying taxes on these two properties. With the back on the tax world in that somebody will be paying taxes on. Okay. Any other questions about this? You can then go to council and mayor to secure his grand street tree concerns and sidewalk issue.
So I received a phone call from a resident earlier last week. The code enforcement sent out letters to a few of our residents regarding their sidewalks, as he should. Uh but the issue with the sidewalks are that they are lifted up because of the trees in the verge of that area. From my understanding, those trees have been there for over thirty years. They're starting to cause issues. And uh it's obvious we want the residents to be able to repair their sidewalks, but the concern is also the tree. So I figured we would discuss it here today. So that we can kind of give those about ten residents a clear answer or processes to what they have to do. I did reach out to Bruce. He did have a a look at it, Bruce, if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. I took a ride to look at look at the trees. I took five pictures of two different trees. I sent those to one of the five three upstairs. So there's over trees. At least on one of the pictures, sort of looks like the center of the tree is dead. Overall, the trees aren't so great. Cutting for the rocks, I kind of grind the roots, looking inside down and said didn't think it would grow. There's too much clay there in the tree. It's it's so sorry about the side. So doesn't seem like that. I did go to all of them, took a look at them, tried to get similar. So this sidewalk to look at.
Well, I brought it up today just so we can discuss or have a plan for all those residents to move forward. I know um Mr. Drope usually puts a timeframe on when things need to be resolved. I think he's aware that this might take a little bit longer. But I wanted to hear your input. There's gonna be a good amount of trees that are gonna have to be removed if you want the residents to fix their sidewalks.
Something remind me, what is the situation?
They have to put him in application to the shade tree commission. Shade Tree Commission goes out and decides whether it's a tree that's dying or not. And we can say we can cut it down. The thing is, what do we do for the trees that aren't dying? That are still affecting the sidewalks into it.
No, on on Kent Avenue, we had a resident, a tree was affecting the sidewalk and the contractor actually cut the roots, so the sidewalk went flat again. And another resident actually put the curb sidewalk in around the tree.
So the issue with the cutting the roots as an arborist or somebody that would better know this this was, it could kill the tree and then we have the the problem if this tree falls on somebody because it's dying.
And that's be up for the shade tree committee to discuss the tree and report back to the council. And what we've done. This way we didn't have the reason to see whether to cut down. It's not in the stream or put a roundabout sidewalk. Trees and so. But we should definitely have the um shade tree committee definitely go out there and take a look at it. Report back to the council.
Did reach out to the chair of the shade tree commission. I do want everybody to remember that nobody on the shade tree commission is an arborist. That's why I'm bringing it up at county, because if we need to get more of an expert to come up for this. Bringing it up now so we can decide how we go about that.
Biggest question is, sorry, could it, biggest question is, you have sidewalks that I I it happened on the side of my dad's house and we ended up taking down the tree.
Nobody's denying the safety hazard. We're just trying to figure out. The shade tree commission usually goes out and says if it's dead, okay. If you're gonna go out and cut the tree, what if it's a healthy tree? That's what I'm asking us as what, what our decision will be.
I would say if it's a safety hazard, the tree has to come down.
Well, well.
Right. That's what happened with mine, too.
Okay, we can go around and around. If you could put together various things that you've heard today, send them over to the shade tree commission. And ask them to review what is the best policy that we should take. And who knows, we may have to find out if somebody uh.
An arborist? That's what, that's why I'm mentioning it today. Nobody on the shade tree commission is an arborist. We'd like a specialty for this. It's a, it's a large amount of trees that we would be cutting down. And if they're dead, of course, we go out and cut them. But if they're not, we would like to know.
Yes, just got to ask. Would be of help there. So definitely. We'll have that and hopefully at our next meeting, we'll leave them. Second meeting today, uh come back. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Uh we are going to go into executive session at the end of the meeting. We're not going to take any action off for that, but there's no use in having everybody sit around for that. So we just moved the gender around a little bit. We're now going to go into ordinance's second reading in public here. Adam Clark. Make a motion wave before reading. Motion has been made by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. To waive the full reading of ordinance, all in favor? Then the eyes have. Opening this up to the public, you can come forward, please give your name and address. You may ask any questions or make any comments concerning the establishment of the recreation department. On first call, second call, third call. Question of course. Question by Mr. Gindy, closed, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, all in favor? That will again, the eyes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance. Move the ordinance. The ordinance is removed by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Olivera, discussion. Local. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion has been adopted. Ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirteen, Adam Clark. Make a motion wave to full reading, seconded. Motion has been made by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman Gindy concerning the waving of full reading of the ordinance, all in favor? Thence the eyes have. Opening this up to the public, you can come forward, please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments concerning this ordinance. First call, second call, third call. Motion has been made closed by Councilman Gindy, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas, all in favor? Thence the eyes have the pleasure on the ordinance. Move the ordinance. The ordinance is removed by Councilman Gindy, seconded by Council President Seula, discussion.
I have a question. Is it that that tiny little empty, the pink one? On that though?
Yeah, it's still four hundred. Local. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The ordinance has been adopted. We have an ordinance for first reading by title only, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two dash fourteen, Adam Clark.
I moved it to council pass ordinance two thousand twenty two dash fourteen on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading in public hearing. It will be held at a meeting at seven P M. on May the second, two thousand twenty two, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street, South River.
Seula, seconded by Councilman Gindy, local.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Is it this on May the second? Turning to our report. Good evening again, Mr. Tatch.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty twenty and twenty twenty one roads are all done except essentially for the milling and overlay. The auto flushers have an eight week delay. So the road on Alborn, the structure there, the road sign at the bottom will be done, so that all comes in. But I am going to work with the contractors, see if I can get them in to do the milling and overlay on this twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two program, it looks like you have that on the agenda for tonight. The substation, uh the station for the railway project. Well, number two replacement, the well's operational. Waiting for the P P to come out, take a little sample. Permits have been sent out, state place for the comments. We can't operate the well until those permits. I see community development, we had a meeting last week, and put together during that, but everything's in order. If they come up with one, I guess the Congress gives us the community's help, that's fair. We'll ask, we'd like to add that to your projects that you see. That is it, sir?
You're good. Any questions? Good morning. Good evening. This is Senga.
Uh Bruce spoke about the roadway projects, also have a resolution for seeing me to do the D E P stoneware discharge permit. Uh that's the resolution for utility refunds and adjustments.
Any questions for Senga? Mr. Soares?
Oh, about D P W? Yes, um. Starts nice. Nixos out. On the borough website, it's in the calendar. And also on the uh D P W Facebook. Also, we're still doing the water service line inspections. And if you'd like to do the inspection yourself, you can go to the borough website and fill out a survey. If not, you can uh call the D P W office and schedule an appointment and we'll come out and inspect it. And also this Friday, there'll be no boat pickup. Uh we still have reusable uh reusable bags if you'd like to come down and pick them up.
Anything else?
If I could ask, if you wanna do um, are we able to try to have when they're open on Saturday to have the bags to give or? Some people can't get there.
Yeah, I I am, we're gonna wait another couple weeks. There's a couple people now trying to double up, so gotta make the master list. Start doing that on Saturdays.
Chief of police. Anyone hear me?
Mayor, first and foremost, uh thank you for proclaiming this week National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. I know my dispatchers, they uh all eight of them, they thank you and appreciate uh all you can do for them. They uh you've seen it, you basically in that, in that room for twelve hours at a time. You know, an emergency and a crisis, it's all hell breaks loose now. So I appreciate that everything that you guys have done. I just have two things. Uh you'll probably be seeing it in the news or in the paper or on the radio. Uh April thirtieth is the D E A's National Prescription Take Back Day. We don't participate in that because we have that Project Medicine Dropbox in our front lobby. So our lobby is open, it it's locked, you know, after after hours after four thirty, but you can come in and drop off any unused medications, uh except for liquids in that Dropbox. So if you hear that uh promo going on about the D E A take back, we don't, we don't participate. All right. And then lastly, um here, this is my pitch, if you can, you know, pitch it to everyone that's watching this uh council meeting, motor vehicle thefts. Um they are on the rise in New Jersey. Um it's not only happening in South River, but it's happening throughout throughout this this state. Um and a majority of the motor vehicle thefts, um you would think that you know, motor vehicle theft, somebody breaking the window, hot wa- hotwiring the car uh and starting the car that way, but majority of them people are leaving their T fobs in the car. Leaving the T fobs in the car, leaving the cars unlocked, uh going into Wawa and leaving the car running, going into the store on Main Street, leaving the car running. So just uh it's a people, you know, the citizens of this town, be a little bit more weary about their cars and their T fobs. Uh you know, hopefully we can uh prevail. I'm I'm surprised that when I went to the car, I forgot the fob in the uh car, the car yelled at me. It it the alarm went off, but I'm walking away from it. That was all this, apparently the door opened and shut and it it was still in there. So and I'm really surprised that a number of people leave their cars unlocked. So oh well, meeting for the chief.
For them? Adam Clark, thank you for coming into the rescue here. Do you have anything to report to us?
I just wanna remind everyone.
Ministerator, Al Landenski.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I can report is the audio prepared for the big improvement. So that section of approving the council chamber for stuff that second thing I have is we'll, we'll have uh received a resolution uh to be added to the agenda tonight. I wanna personally thank Officer Danielle Stone. She uh worked very hard to help us finally get a shelter for stray dogs that we have, cats in town. It's all the way in Skilman, New Jersey, but it's a shelter we got turned down. Uh and every shelter in Middlesex County. So uh we appreciate you proving this tonight and contract will start after tomorrow, and our animal patrol officer will have a place to take their uh strays. The only last thing is we got a letter today from the county of Middlesex. That's starting April twenty fifth through May second, they will be paving Whitehead Avenue from Jackson Street to Camout. That will be a willing paving.
Thank you. Anything for D A?
Yeah, Mr. Landenski, I have a couple of questions. So with the resolution uh two thousand twenty two dash one thirty seven. I know it says anything after seven days, uh the animal becomes a property of the shelter. And it also talks about euthanizing. How do, who makes that call?
The shelter.
But they're not just gonna euthanize on the eighth day and say, hey.
We try to have an adopted as long as they can. They can't long term. Erds everybody to have their dogs. It's a tag. We have readers, the police department has a reader, the animal control officer has a reader. Uh we've had a number of chief, we both know this, in the last couple of weeks. More than we've had a long period of time. All but one have been returned to the owner, but they're leaving the dogs on leash. And the problem of the animal control officer without a shelter by license can't do anything, because she has no place to take the dog. We had to get.
Thank you, Chief. The second question I had, um I know at the last meeting I was not able to be here. Whether there was residents I was concerned about, the ribbon street, is there an update on that?
Yes, I've met with the uh owner of the property numerous times. Made him aware that uh it's stop on work order on the premise. And that uh he either changes what he's done inside the building or needs to go for various or to take that one.
That reminds me, um most to you and to Mr. Soares, on the, well, it's not division, it's willet. Where division meets willet, there's a manhole, it looks as though it's uh beginning to sink. Can we figure out what we're gonna do with that? We'll repair tomorrow. Yes. That would be very good. If there's nothing else.
I have a question for Mr. Landenski. I know we had also discussed with the resident in Foothills that she was getting a reinspection uh done with the issue with the with the retaining wall. Has that been scheduled?
Uh as I indicated to the mayor a couple of weeks ago, both Saraval and Eastfront have defined to do the inspections. And I also spoke to the uh regulatory affairs at D C A. And the property owner who had made the complaint has withdrawn her request for them to make an inspection.
Okay, but there was conversation that she had discussed with Mr. Drope about going to reinspect and.
Mr. Drope has been there a little while. There's been no work since he was there the last time. We find no violence.
From the looks of the information that she gave us through emails, there was still an inspection needing to be done from the retaining.
Far as I know, Mr. Drope has just come back in a week. Um there is no further. Far as I know, Mr. Droppa has just come back in uh for a week, um there is no further.
Can someone contact the resident that's been giving him the response for them?
We have, but as I said, she's the one now that has told the state of New Jersey she's declaring them making.
We've been hearing about this for months, we haven't resolved and. We tell her we're gonna give her an answer on something, but then we tell her to call for an inspection and she's been getting. And we give a wrong eyes answer.
Myself and the attorney have fought her numerous times. And her problem is the neighbor to neighbor dispute, which the Pearl doesn't get involved in. Whatever the Pearl had to inspect, we've inspected.
Lindenski, I have a question, could we get Dave to go out there and put another set of eye on it?
Mr. Droppa is also a licensed building inspector. Really has enough work to offer not to have another inspector go on top of another.
Yeah, but ignoring the concern of the residents.
If you remember, I told you that if the wall, if the wall is below forty-eight inches, doesn't require a building permit? Below forty-eight inches. Building inspectors really doesn't have anything to do, there's no standard for that wall to be designed. It's under forty-eight inches, it's not in the construction.
Mr. Mayor, the last time she came up here, you let her speak and then just said, okay, we'll see you again next time. I think that was a little bit of ignoring.
No, it is not, she has continuously come up here. And we have told her, the answer is, there is nothing that the town can do. And in fact, you wanna make sure of it, you go tell her. Tell her that we discussed this matter and you tell her that.
Official, you know, she's been, somebody told her that they would go to reinspect. And she keeps calling and nobody's scheduling. But the other.
She was given the answer.
Do it. The town's got inspectors privileged to come in, they're refusing to do it. Do you think somebody from the construction department needs to speak to this resident? Who has spoken to Mr. Droppa and Droppa says that he keeps going to look in his schedule to see when he's going to schedule it. Since when does Mr. Droppa schedule his uh inspection bike walk? Pretty rash to make that with that. Mr. Lindenski.
First I heard that Mr. Droppa said he would go back again, I would speak to him tomorrow, if he said that, I will send him back again. This is not a construction project, it's a zoning issue.
And who's the zoning official, correct?
No, I'm the zoning official, he's the zoning inspector.
Okay, inspect.
I'll ask him if he feels that another inspection is warranted, I'll be glad for him to set it up and go back.
My other question for you would be that it had been told to me that our building inspector's last day was going to be April fifteenth. Is that true?
That's incorrect.
Was it supposed to be his last day?
Well, there was a communication problem, me myself and Mr. the building inspector, uh that's what it was.
And he was that.
When we pass the ordinance, he is getting a new title as deputy construction official. An increase in his ti- in his salary is increasing his cost.
And do you approve that? Can we talk about the position that we added that position to?
Additional money is in the budget, we've discussed the budget.
Okay, is that position in right now in the ordinance?
Deputy construction official?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I had that title for many years, rest in peace under Mr. Lawrence. Both I received my salary. Not a lot of them.
You would have to look, now we're going to, now we're speaking to and phrase about positions that we're not sure that we have.
I can only say that I've checked the salary guide, it's not there at the time that we're going to present the ordinance for increases for people that were discussed with the budget committee. We will also put in an ordinance to put that job title.
But the ordinance hasn't been put in yet, is that what we're saying?
That's correct. You can't do that till the budget's been approved.
Will we be discussing the budget this meeting or are we still waiting until?
You can bring up any questions you want, or uh talk to Mr. Zanga anytime you want, others have been doing that.
Mr. Zanga, how many employees will we have constructed? How many full-time employees will we have? Just the one at forty at Washington. And we also had. If we will move that position from the budget. So we've removed the full-time position. I constantly get from residents the concerns that we have within the construction department, doesn't seem like it's a priority for this borough. It doesn't seem like we want to facilitate anything for our residents or our developers or for our businesses within the construction department.
And if I may.
I'm hold on. I would also like to say that if we can't have a full-time inspector or head of that department being full-time, how can we facilitate our? Uh I get people calling me that if the inspector shows up, if an inspection is made and they show up early and the resident's not there in time, they have to call back and reschedule and it can only be the following. Cause the two days that our part-timers work has already been filled for that week. And it just delays and delays and delays people's processes of getting a lift. And it doesn't seem like it's concerning to them. I don't understand why we would delete that from our budget, do we feel that we will never need a full-time construction official in this borough? With all the development that we want happening in this town, with Main Street trying to get better? Does nobody else have a concern with the construction department for our budget? That's all, so.
Maybe we might as well just continue, it's time for the uh reports to go back.
Are you gonna have a good one?
Yes.
The I am the liaison for the library board, I just want everybody to remember. I would like everybody to remember that this week the lib- the Friends of the Library will have a book sale from April twelfth to April fifteenth. This week is spring break with the kids, if you wanna see all the exciting stuff that the library has, please go on their website or Facebook or just stop into the library. Don't have anything to uh report for this month, cause we didn't meet yet, but. I'd also like to mention with the Shade Tree Commission, they met on April seventh this month. Unfortunately, I was not able to go, I was sick. But I do have some information regarding free cycle, we will be coming up with a uh curbside recycling for May fourteenth and fifteenth in South River. Soon we'll have all that information up for the residents to see. It's a good way to get our uh gently used things or things that we wanna give away without having to throw it out to the dumpster and could be of use. More information will be uh on that will be posted on our website, so please look out for that. And that's all.
Chief of Police?
Thank you, uh first off, like Chief had mentioned before, uh April is prescription drugs. It's uh prescriptions like spring cleaning day. What you can do is your unused prescriptions or older prescriptions, take them, post them in a fast bag to pass them in the lobby of the police department. Please do not leave any personal information with the prescription when you drop it off. And it's uh in the lobby during normal daylight hours. And it goes off through the night gate. Please be mindful of it, you gotta keep your prescription drugs safe for the way, don't just throw them in the garbage or press that button for it. Because that uh just adds a perfect to the problem, I would like. As Adriana had said too, uh with water service lines, you can do a self-service inspection and do it online. Or you could schedule an appointment with four seven three two two five seven nine zero five one. Scheduling is done Sunday to Friday from nine at two. Uh for the residents and the employees will show up, they should have a bare ID. Also, the only other thing too is that we have just approved the yeah animal shelter and everything. Residents, please be mindful of your pets, make sure they're intact when they're outside, make sure that you keep them on either a leash or contained within the yard and everything and uh that they're secure and not running for the. I think that's all I have, uh thank you.
Thanks.
I'll start off with the Board of Ed. The South River High School Adopt a Family Program is continuing to strive to assist families in Ukraine. Items will be accepted through April twenty-sixth and they currently have bins located in front of each uh office in each building. And there's a bin located outside the board office and the South River Library for everyone's convenience. Uh barring any snow days, uh schools will be closed on Friday, May twenty-seventh and Tuesday, uh May thirty-first. That's the elementary school, middle school and high school. Uh the primary school will be open with an early release on Friday, May twenty-seventh to make up for the emergency day that they had to use on January twenty-first. And school uh will be closed on Tuesday, May thirty-first as well. Um one of the things that was brought up to our attention from the Board of Ed was there seems to be a problem with vaping on campus or on the school grounds. Um and they asked for our help, I wanna thank Ms. Wyatt and Chief for looking into this matter. Seems like a lot of towns are now putting ordinances in place to assist uh the Board of Ed. Uh so hopefully by the next meeting, we can see something if it's permissible. And I will be make sure uh make sure to report back on uh the next Board of Ed meeting once it happens. For recreation, I wanna thank, huge shout out to Terry Chandler, who is our uh program coordinator for the rec department. Our cheerleading program has consistently placed in the top three uh for each tournament for a new program, the amount of youth in town that are participating. We finally have a eight U baseball team, an eight U softball team. I know the softball team played yesterday, uh councilman, Council President Seela, I don't know if they won or not. But uh I I'm sure it was awesome to watch. We have seen our numbers double in less than a year and a half, and I know Terry's gonna continue to do a great job. Beyond the lookout, we have uh hopefully adult volleyball coming up, we have youth volleyball, she's planning uh summer rec. So there are things that are coming down the pipe, not only just for the youth of South River, but she is also focusing on adult activities as well, which is something we're really excited about, that hasn't happened before. And she continues to do a great job, so you know, I I definitely wanted to give her a shout out, but she's doing a a tremendous job. And that's all I have for.
Thank you, thank you, um. Uh first municipal alliance meeting will be uh tomorrow at six P M right here at thirteen. Also, our next planning room meeting will be April nineteenth, which also starts right here at seven P M. The zoning board meeting will be started right there at six P M. Six. I guess the uh former public works, now the weather's been getting better. We've got several phone calls and they tell you that they are flushing out the old pathways, you have to to bear with them. You do see one that they're doing the most, feel free to email any of us, we'll pass it off to uh Adriana and the former public works. As well as a reminder that we will be flushing out the hydrants. Starting on May second, it took about three weeks, which means maybe a slight tint to the water. But bear with us when we do what we have to do, three weeks flushing the water. Anything else, if you need to reach out to us, if there's any issues greater than that.
Thank you.
Well, uh yeah, uh the rabies clinic was held a couple of weekends ago and there were a total of two hundred and eleven vaccines given for dogs in town, hundred and five and that of town, seventy-six, cats in town. I'd like to thank all the people back to this. My next Board of Health meeting will be on April nineteenth and my special health priority meeting will be on April twenty-sixth. So I will have more of a.
Thank you.
President Seela? Thank you, Mayor, um this report, EPC will be meeting again on April twentieth. Um they have a lot of plans and a lot of very good things that they would like to do. And they are concerned with the inspections and with the contractors that are there. The contractors are very happy, um that's how we're progressing in town, the way the inspections are going. So we're gonna continue working with our contractors and we're gonna develop Main Street and hopefully we're gonna be moving to the future and start bringing in a lot more accident. Um that, Mayor, right now, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh I have nothing to report, so I will open this up in front of the agenda and public comments. Please give your name and address, you have ten minutes to ask questions and make any comments. First call. At the South Coast. Biomedical says J Tree, five reports says three two two. Been here about the issue of brainstorm. You go by the way here. There's one panel that's forty-five. And sticking up. To cover your back. Seven people in the dress there. So last year on tree applications. Rather dismissive in branding uh applications for tree. It's been discussion amongst the fish members. We have food for saving as many trees as possible. Best for this where it's to do so, but. Bots, uh Professor Jasev Ross, we have a school of biomedical sciences, uh speak for us, tree expert. About a number of issues, but. We've recommended that hire arborists to do tree evaluations. Last year, there were a number of trees, I didn't eat, next thing you found that tree's dead. By. Just. But there there's some where, you know, it was as a layman, my judgment fall recommend and then for as as a fish, as a layman, making these decisions. Professor Volski said it was national certification, certification for arborists. But but our role as municipal in that there's tree viability evaluation certificate from insurance industry. The arborist are certified in doing a risk assessment for a good tree to say this is the the likelihood of tree failing somehow that's viability, so. Um we've discussed uh whether we wanna ask the council to hire arborists for us, whether we could want us to out of our own budget, try and hire somebody for as a booth. So uh someone to stay up with. Whether or not you wanna authorize us to submit tree evaluation requests. to C N E for that. So that's You make formal
Yes, and you should make the formal request because I mean there's always, you run into the problem that well, we just can't hire somebody like that. Free quotes, etcetera, seven, five, and I mean, you know, overgoes and the wriggle that we have to put up with here on a school level. So please meet, discuss this matter, goodbye.
But so in in as I understand it, a resident complained about sidewalks. It's all bad. Issue violation of order of remedy to various So, you know. The in the public right of way, the request has to come to us. Our next meeting is May fifth. And it'd worry me if we were gonna run a resident afoul of timeline from code enforcement officer. Then do not be able to consider their request. And so so uh that came in mind. Something get
They won't be paying the taxes to be able to see them. Thank you. Anyone else? First call, second call? Motion to close Gindy. Seura in favor? And against, the eyes have it. There are no mayoral appointments that I alone can appoint. If you have some mayoral appointments, it provides consent of governing body on the consent resolutions. Consent resolution, okay?
Resolution one twenty-eight, authorize collective Resolution one twenty-nine, authorize south hall fire department Resolution one thirty, authorize economic dump and commission Resolution one thirty-one, authorize partial deal of interest on block three twenty-five block one. Resolution one thirty-two, authorize partial deal of interest on block twenty-one. Resolution one thirty-three, authorize south conduct any event. Resolution one thirty-four, authorize park time parks and recreation Resolution one thirty-five, authorize closing claims list. Resolution one thirty-seven, authorizing a contract with sale of friend homeless animals for emergency animal shelter.
Motion to accept that. Motion made by Councilman Gindy, seconded by Councilman Ballas. Was there one thirty-six? Okay, thank you. Well called.
Um Dallas, Councilman Gindy?
Yes, uh it will be abstaining from one to
Twenty.
Yes.
Twenty, yeah, yes. It's not all there. Uh then Seela?
Yes, stamping event. It's been paid. It's accepted. It's been accepted. So after the governing body comments, we've given that for the girl. Uh um this order has been done.
I just, you know, they have to also be And other than that, I have
Thank you. Thank you. Uh first of all, I'd like to recognize Dan Banner. She has been fabulous perhaps since she's come back. It's real loud. Can't say come back, but has uh filled in the seat just to help us out. Thank you. I also like to recognize National Public Safety Telecommunications. Um I know this is a major I'm bound to dial nine one one or for that matter, dialing two three one thousand. The voices that are behind that phone is Adam, Mary Ann, Kevin, Maggie, Daniella, Sarah, Galen, and Kate. I know the council as well as the borough of South River appreciates what you do. As a pretty Easter egg hunt, uh Terry, you did a fabulous job. Uh I heard nothing but good reviews. Uh thank you to all that helped with her. Uh as you heard earlier from the chief, lock their cars. People are stealing their cars as easy as just to the door. Lock it. Last time. Thank you.
As Councilwoman Ballas mentioned, you know, it's starting to get nice outside. Please drive very slow. On Willet Ave, it's sometimes it feels like it's a raceway, uh especially on Cam Avenue as well. Um as Councilman Gindy mentioned, Terry did an awesome job with the Easter egg hunt. It was a great event. We got some feedback from the some of the parents that attended. We're gonna be looking to make some changes, add some more games next year. And as everyone mentioned so far, happy Easter to everyone and their families. God bless.
Thank you.
Um the council? Once again, uh I reiterate to the residents, please be mindful of your pets. Also, another thing too is the recycling. Please be mindful where you put your containers. They have been blown over and all over place before they had a chance to pick them up. Place them be, you know, somewhat sheltered behind the tree or alongside of a tree at the curb line or behind a car uh where the wind can't really blow it. It's very dry out neighborhood. With that, I wish everyone a very happy Easter, happy Passover. That's our for today. First off tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Do you wanna ask, now that it looks like the battery project is somewhat finished? Um is it there a possibility for the company to I don't know, show up at one of our next meetings maybe or get some more information on how that's gonna go about? What are the benefits for the borough once this project does go live? Would that be a possibility, Mr. Gindy? Just, uh you know, everybody sees that it looks like it's finished and it's sort of yeah started. Just a way of showing or letting the residents know how this is gonna be beneficial for the once it does begin. When we will see those I know a lot of people have been asking. I usually direct them to the borough website, but I maybe it's been a little bit better also. At least I'm not Uh also, it's his part. I know I keep asking, I just wanna know if we have a status. I was I was gonna ask Councilman Al there last meeting, but he wasn't here. You had mentioned that the company was gonna come down in March.
Yeah, they're getting the
Bye. Yeah, so are they doing, do they dismantle everything as well or is that something that I at the I will be doing? I just wanted to find a timeframe where they know we've been talking about it for a while. Uh the Shade Tree Commission had also thought about that being a good area for a rain garden behind the equipment or slopes down apart. You know, you see the park is a puddle, a gizzard. Um so that was an idea, but we didn't discuss anything further because we wanted to see battery project would finish. So just to let everybody know, that is an idea that was floated out when we discussed rain gardens. Hopefully it could help mitigate the flooding that happens at night. I just wanna congratulate once again the Rector Leading Program. I've been to all their competitions. They've been amazing. It was a fun ten weeks that they had. We did get an email that they will be extending the gymnastics program and one other program for the girls for another month or so. If anybody's interested, you can get on and register for those classes. It's enjoyable to see that the kids always have something to look forward to, whether it's cheerleading, softball, baseball. And hopefully volleyball soon. So I just keep a lookout for all those programs that um do pop up and I know they're new, so people are always asking about it. Enjoy the weather. It is nice. Much had spent the day outside today. It's a little windy, but beautiful. Spring break has been this week, so there's a lot more kids And I know everybody's starting to ride their bikes a lot more. So uh I'm sure we'll get a little more of the people's about sidewalks as well, but it does help people motivate them to wanna be more outside. It's uh easier to go there. That's all.
Thank you. Um just to give a report on this mayor's we gotta stop talking and do things for us meeting. Um just some of the projects that have been going on in town for the rest two years. Going on this year, third year, just in progress, is we've had numerous road improvements in town. Uh they're being paved, sewer lines are being re- redone. Um improvements to our parks. We've been working on those for the last few years and we're continuing working on our parks. We've purchased numerous vehicles for police, fire, sanitation, electric. A office on aging bus. So all these have been purchased over the last couple of years. Our police department, they had recorders for their camera system. They've had uh different equipment that they need, CAD system, nine one one upgrades. Fire department gear, different radios, roof improvements that the town had been neglected over the last how many years. Purchasing of lawn equipment. Replacement of our fuel tanks down at the D P W R that were, can't even tell you how many years old. Um the library improvements, T V thirty-five with our equipment and cameras. Various sewer improvements with manhole repairs. Various water treatment upgrades and our battery storage facility, which is all going in. And we've been working on this for the last few years. So we're not just talking, we're actually doing things. Um as was said in the past, comments are uh children are out, they're riding their bicycles, scooters. Please be aware. Um be courteous to your neighbors in parking and please speeding be very careful with. Um I wanna thank our dispatchers for a great job that they do. They are on top of the situation at all times and they're very responsive when you do fall and you need something done. With that, happy Easter and happy Passover to everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you. Uh I will repeat, May second hydrant flushing because I'm sure that there are going to be people who are not going to know about it and are gonna be totally amazed at this. Even though we've tried to tell everybody everywhere, it's coming. Tell your friends and neighbors. Uh you know, many people have been thanked here and there's one person I would like like to recognize and that is Tiffany Fisher. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Home Moves Tribune Girls Basketball Player of the Year. Uh she's done an outstanding job. Girls basketball scoring one thousand four hundred and sixty-five points and that's with the pandemic there. She's been able to continue. She might have broken uh the all-time record. But congratulations Tiffany for a job well done. And the girls' basketball seventeen and ten, they were number ten in the county. The boys, twenty and eight, and they were number nine. So uh if you wanna see something uh well far going, just take a look at our, you know, sports programs that we have there. Some way of spending an evening. Not gonna cost you an arm and a leg, so. Uh happy Passover, happy Easter. Also Ramadan is continuing this uh month. Come to an end on May the second is our next meeting. As for this meeting, we are going to go into closed session, but for all intents purposes, when we come out, we're simply adjourn the meeting. So nothing else is going to go on after this. Having said that, executive session, not a perfect, the resolution.
The pleasure on resolution from the made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, hopeful.
Woman Dallas? Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Trans
Yes. Yes. Shall return to adjourn. Open. Second. Motion as made by Mr. Gindy, signed by Mrs. Ballas to reopen. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the eyes have it. Is there anything else to come before us?
Just like to ask one question to Mr. Lewdowski, please.
Yes.
Are we ever gotten any complaints about our building department or construction people making inspections?
Not to me or not to the building department?
Just wondering. It's just a question I thought about. I want to ask. Okay, thank you.
If there's anything else to come before us, hearing nothing. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Gurchensky.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seura. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the eyes have it. We stand adjourned until May second.